Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 20th, 2023 Northborough Select Board Meeting. My name is Mitch Cohen. I will call the meeting to order. I have an opening statement to make. This open meeting of the Northborough Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Select Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the Northborough Select Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the Chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream or the recording of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. I will now go around the virtual room and confirm everyone can hear and be heard. Um, let's see, Kristin Wixted.
Here.
Julianne Hirsch.
Here.
Laura Zeiten.
Here.
Uh, Lisa Micali has notified me that she will be joining just a little bit later. Um, so she will, she will answer here when, when so prompted. We also have with us interim Town Administrator Mike Gallagher.
President.
And we have Northborough Cable helping us with the technical aspects to the meeting. Um, I will entertain a motion. So we're going to, what we're going to do, folks, for anybody who's watching, we're going to go into executive session for about an hour, and we're going to get back to open session, do our regular meeting then. So you're going to see a boring statement saying we're in executive session for about that hour. I will entertain a motion to that effect.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to litigation at SA Farm and pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and negotiations with the fire union and pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A7 for the review and consideration of the following executive session meeting minutes, October 16th, 2023 and October 19th, 2023, due to the Chair's determination that a discussion regarding these matters in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board and to return to open session to continue with the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Kristin, seconded by Julianne. Any discussion? All those in favor? Uh, Kristin?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. We will now switch over to the executive session Zoom, and we'll see everyone back here in about an hour. Okay.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Hi everyone, we've just concluded our executive session. Thank you for being patient. We're gonna take about another two or three minutes of a break just to allow people to stretch their legs before we come back to the regular meeting. Thank you.
Alright, so we'll continue once the rest of the board members have arrived.
Can you hear me? Mitch, can you hear me?
I hear Laura. You hear her?
Oh, hi. Sorry about that.
Still waiting?
Are we live?
Are we live?
We are.
We're live?
Yeah, this, this meeting with the notice has been live for the last hour and a half while we were over in executive session land. Appears we've had about fifteen very excited guests waiting for us to start. So we're just waiting for Lisa to resume. This is having some technical issues.
Mitch, can you, can you change my name for me? I'm, I'm on a borrowed iPad and I can't, I can't figure out how to do it.
Owen, can you make me a co-host, please? Thank you.
Thank you.
Been renamed.
Thank you, great.
Let's, um, let's take care of the meeting minutes of November sixth. We'll wait for, for Lisa to join. I don't anticipate she'd have a problem with that. Let's, let's do that and then we'll go to public comment if we need to and continue along quickly.
I have another question about the minutes.
Sure.
Um, so I was wondering if anyone else understood the discussion about the relocation of pulling places as I did. I understood that the senior center can accommodate the people as they need the building, but that we were going to wait for, um, that we are gonna wait for information about the parking lot. And that, I think, is an important enough statement to put, add to the minutes. But I just want to make sure that I understood it as other people understood it, so.
Yeah, from what I remember, town clerk describing is that he thought the building could probably accommodate voting, but that the parking lot and the driveway posed challenges.
So we're waiting for that. So, but I, does, does anyone else agree that, that, that statement or that sentence should be added to the minutes?
I, I agree.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm looking for the, the page where this discussion is taking place, if you could.
It's after the Church Street discussion.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I see it now. I agree, it makes sense to, to add some detail to that effect.
So, do you want a motion?
Sure, Di, do you have a, have an understanding of what we're looking for here?
Yeah, I think as amended and I'm, I'm making up.
Okay.
And then, honestly, I, I notified you earlier. One was about, I wanted the, um, I want, I requested that Andy does speak to the board, not the club. And there's one other, oh my gosh.
Yeah, I think Linda has those amendments already. Yeah.
So shall I make a motion?
Sure, please.
I move the board vote to approve the November sixth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes as amended.
Second.
A motion's been made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen. Any other discussion? All those in favor, Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
I'm going to abstain.
Oh, yes, that's true. You were not here. Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor with one abstention. Thank you very much. Alright, with, um, uh, thank you. Let's, we're gonna try to quickly go through some of these things because I know we've got some public hearings. I will ask as we do near the beginning of all of our meetings for any public comment. We will, of course, have, uh, we have three public hearings scheduled and will allow and encourage comments on, uh, the other agenda items. But if there is anyone in our audience that has comments for us other than those items, please raise your electronic hands. I'll be happy to recognize you. Not seeing any hands. Going once. Going twice. Alright, we'll continue on. I, I am strongly suspecting we will have members of the public with input on some of our agenda items. Um, town administrator search update is very simple. We have one. Um, uh, as folks know, towards the end of a meeting late last week, um, we, um, last week or was it, yeah, it was last week. Things moved on quickly. Um, uh, we, we did make a conditional offer of employment to Tim McInerney, um, and, um, after some, some great interviews and some really thoughtful deliberations. Um, so the two things that are going on right now is we are negotiating a contract and we have an executive session at the end of this meeting to, to further that discussion. Um, and MRI, our consultants with this are doing a thorough background check to make sure everything is in order. Um, and my understanding is we'd be look, if, assuming things go well, we'd be looking at somewhere in the mid-December range for a start date, but we'll be talking about that as a board in the very near future. Um, I don't think I had anything else. I just wanted to, to make sure to mention that near the start of, of a meeting for anyone that missed it. Um, about four hours into our last meeting. Um, alright, now we have a public hearing to open. Let me get to the right page so that I can state all the things. Alright, um, I will open the hearing pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Section one thirty-eight, section, chapter one thirty-eight, section twelve. Notice is hereby given that the select board will hold a remote public hearing on Monday, November twentieth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. To act on an application for a new general on-premises wine and malt beverage license as submitted by Marble House Coffiers, D B A, Nicholas Michael Spa and the following described premises located at four twenty-two West Main Street in Northborough, Massachusetts, approximately five thousand thirty square feet on two floors consisting of a reception area, area, pedicure area, hair department, and an outdoor patio. Hearing is now open. Um, we have a couple of things to, a couple of people to bring in for this. Uh, let's see. Tessia. Tessia Colo and Lieutenant Griffin. Okay, so I'm bringing the two of you in. And if Tessia and Lieutenant Griffin, if you could, uh, turn on your cameras if you so desire and your microphones, um, ask you to identify yourselves. From there.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Lieutenant Brian Griffin, Northborough Police.
Great to see you as always. Tessia, you are in the meeting, but, uh, we can neither see nor hear you. You could unmute yourself at least would be excellent. We'll ask to unmute. Tessia, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you now.
Okay.
Excellent. Uh, you can turn on your camera if you want to, but you don't need to.
I can.
So my understanding is that, um, you are. Okay, that's, that's alright. Don't, don't worry about the camera. Um, we'll, we'll continue. As long as you're part of the meeting, that's all we need. Um, that you are looking to, um, receive a new on-premises wine and malt beverage license. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, can you tell us briefly, uh, the business, uh, that you're in and what you're looking to do with this license?
Oh, it's a hair salon and spa. So we do have a special occasion and people come for like wedding parties, birthday parties, and some of those clients was drinking alcohol with them, uh, and that's why I went to the town to see if it's legally we, they could do that. Time out wasn't, so that's why I went to the town to see what we could do for that. Not to increase traffic at all, it's just to provide for our clients for special occasions. Instead have them bring stuff and then it's a liability for us.
Excellent, thank you. And Lieutenant Griffin, you've, you've done your, your department's done your due diligence as you always have, correct?
Yes, uh, yes, Mr. Chair, this is, um, basically, uh, what, um, Tasha has just said, um, more or less to provide the services of having a glass of wine with the services they provide there. Um, this is not, uh, unique, um, statewide. We did check with the A B C C as ultimately they'll have the final say in this matter. Um, and they're seeing a lot of this uh, in Boston and some other, uh, towns and cities. Um, so they did not have an issue with it. Uh, the background check, uh, turned out fine and, uh, she is, uh, has received her alcohol certification tip certification. And, uh, we have no issues.
Excellent. Uh, members of the board, questions? Julianne?
So I, I, I might have missed something. So, so you're not selling the, um, the beverages, they're?
We, we will need to sell because the town of Northborough does not allow us to give to them. So that's why I need the license for sale to the clients and not provide to them. It's a free drink.
And I guess my other question would be to Diane. So this is the wine and malt only, right?
Correct.
Okay, and we have how many of those?
If this is granted tonight, we would still have three available.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Members of the board, any additional questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public that wish to, um, provide input, ask any questions on this item? I don't see any hands up. I'll give it another couple of seconds to be sure. Okay, seeing no hands up, I will, uh, ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I move the board to approve the application for new wine.
We need to close the public hearing, the one up from that.
Well, no, I move the board to close the public hearing.
Excellent.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Lisa, seconded by Julianne. Any other discussion? All those in favor, Lisa?
To close the public hearing, aye.
Okay, excellent. Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion on the application?
I move the board to approve the application for new wine and malt general on, malt general on premise license as submitted by Marble House Coffiers, D B A Michael, Nicholas Michael Spa for the premises located four twenty-two West Main Street. With the condition that the licensee receives satisfactory inspections by the building, fire, and health departments.
Second.
Motion's been made by Lisa, seconded by Julianne. Any questions or comments? Alright, all those in favor, Lisa?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor with one abstention. Um, congratulations, Tasha. Thank you very much, Lieutenant Griffin. That item is now concluded. So Tasha, I'm going to send you back to the attendees list. You're welcome to stick around if you would like.
Thank you very much.
Thank, good, good luck and congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so next up, we have another public hearing on a similar, somewhat similar item. Let me get to that page. And I will now open the public hearing pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter one thirty-eight, Section twelve. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen, A K A Select Board, will hold a remote public hearing on Monday, November twentieth, two thousand twenty-three at seven oh five P M. To act in an application to transfer the all-alcoholic beverage restaurant license from Anthony Tomiolo's, D B A A J Tomiolo's Restaurant to L C A T Incorporated, D B A A G A A J Tomiolo's Restaurant on the following described premises located at four one one West Main Street, Northborough, Massachusetts. Dining restaurant approximately three thousand five hundred eighteen square feet on one floor, including a porch section with two entrances and four exits. Public hearing is now open. So Lieutenant Griffin is still here. I know we've got, uh, two more people to bring in. Henry Rappa. Bringing you in and we should have Lisa Combs. Who I don't see, but we will find out more about that from Henry. Henry, if you could, uh, unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you would like.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Henry. Uh, my name is Mitch Cohen. Uh, good to see you. Um, I had on my list Lisa Combs joining us tonight. I don't see her name in the attendees list. Do you know if she was still planning on attending? Are you on her behalf?
I do know she was planning on attending, but I am acting on, on the behalf of, of Lisa.
Sure. Um, Lisa, if you are in the attendees list under another, Laura, alright, I saw Lauren Galato. I'm gonna that's, that's might be, okay, might be somebody else's computer. That's fine. Okay, I'm bringing you in. To rename to match what I have. Alright, so you must be Lisa?
Yes.
Excellent. And could you identify yourself, sir?
I'm Anthony Tomiolo.
Excellent. Okay, fantastic. Um, thank you for joining us. I, 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 we read your application and, uh, want to, but why don't you give us a summary of, uh, of your business, which I think we all know? And, uh, and what you're looking to do with this license transfer?
Sir, good evening, members of the select board. Uh, my name's Henry Rappa. And I'm counsel to Lisa and Anthony. Uh, as many of you are aware, Tony Tomiolo owned and operated A J's Restaurant for three decades. And Tony, um, had a remarkable tradition of welcoming patrons into the restaurant with warm hospitality. Uh, he passed away. And in his will, he left his interest in the restaurant and the liquor license to Lisa and Anthony. So they've worked their the vast majority of their adult lives. They have an impeccable record, uh, and great customer service. They look forward to honoring their father's tradition of welcoming patrons into the restaurant and continuing the restaurant in his memory. They are the sole shareholders, Lisa and Anthony are the sole shareholders of El Cat Inc. And, uh, we, we seek the transfer of the license from the estate of Anthony Tomiolo to El Cat Inc.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, Lieutenant Griffin? Your usual summary, please?
And thank you, Mr. Chair. Absolutely no concerns or issues. Uh, Anthony and Lisa have been there forever and, um, we have no concerns.
Excellent. Uh, members of the board, questions or comments?
I'm sorry for your loss. I'm sorry I didn't get you off, but.
Right, thank you.
Lisa, I think I saw your hand up.
Yes, I was going to offer the same, uh, same sentiment and that, uh, it's a wonderful restaurant. He's done a lovely job. We've already, many of us have gone there many times and, um, glad that you'd be carrying that on. And, uh,
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, you're, you're an excellent member of the, uh, the Northborough community. Um, business has been there, of course, a while and. we we are appreciative of your father's hard work and um, and and of your interest in continuing the business. That's good for the community.
Thank you. Appreciate the kind words.
Great. Uh, any other comments or questions from the board? This being a public hearing, are there any members of the public that wish to offer uh, input or have any questions on this item? I see none. I'll give it another few seconds to be sure. Going once. Going twice. Okay, I see no comments or questions. Um, unless there's anything else, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen to close the hearing. Any questions or comments? Uh, all those in favor, Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion on the application?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to approve the application for the transfer of the all alcoholic beverages restaurant license from Anthony Tomiolo doing business as A J's Restaurant to L C A T Incorporated, doing business as A J Tomiolo's Restaurant. For premises located at four eleven West Main Street, with the condition that the licensee receives satisfactory inspections by the building, fire and health departments.
Second.
Motion's been made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor on the motion, Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Application has been granted. Uh, congratulations and thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Good luck for Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Yeah, you too. And Lieutenant Griffin, thank you very much. I think this uh, this concludes your time before us this evening.
Thank you very much.
Always welcome to stick around, of course, but.
I I have some dessert to eat right now, but uh, I'd love to stick around. But have a great Thanksgiving.
Drive by Northwood and drop it off. We'd all appreciate it.
Got it. All right, take it. Bye bye.
Thank you very much. Oh, and and Henry, I've almost forgot about you. Thank you. All right, while we're on the business of public hearings, we have one more. To the correct page. I will open the public hearing pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty, Section fifty-six. You are hereby notified that the Northborough Select Board will hold a remote public hearing on Monday, November twentieth, two thousand twenty-three at seven ten P M. For the per well, that was very optimistic. At seven ten P M for the purpose of discussing the proposed valuation of each class of property. Vote on a residential factor and the allocation of the tax burden among the four classes of real property, residential, open space, commercial and industrial, and of personal property. Hearing is now open. I know we have um, some special guests. Lee, I will bring you in. And Chris, let's see. I saw on my list Chris Reedy. Who I do not see in the attendees list. Chris, if you are there under some other name, feel free to raise your hand and I will bring you in. Or Lee, do you have any idea if Chris Reedy is joining us?
Um, I know Chris says he was uh, gonna join. Paul is under the weather, so. Uh, Chris told me he was gonna be here, so.
Okay.
All the information that we need, so um.
Excellent. Right, um, understand you have a presentation for us this evening or do you want to go through verbally?
Um, if uh, you you allow me, Mr. Chair, to um, share my screen, is that all right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Let me know if you have any technical issues with that and if I need to. I'll let you think. There you go.
Okay. Uh, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having uh, me here. Uh, uh, my name is Lee Kim Anibong. I'm the principal assessor here in Northborough. Um, and we are here for uh, F Y twenty-four's um, tax classification hearing. Uh, what I want to do is just kind of walk everybody through the process. Uh, what the classification hearing is, why we do it, and exactly how, just some of the components uh, that are part of um, the hearing. Um, feel free to stop me at any time, um, if there are any questions. And of course, I'll uh, answer any uh, questions um, at the end of um, the uh, packet, okay? Um, first and foremost, just move this out of way. Okay, can everyone see this here?
I believe we all can, yes.
Okay, um, now cities and towns that are certified by the state as assessing uh, property at full fair cash value have the option to shift the tax burden. Uh, the purpose of this hearing is to provide you, the select board, um, all pertinent information for you to make those policy decisions. Um, at the end of this presentation, the select board will vote to uh, adopt a residential factor of one, I'm sorry, a residential factor uh, that'll determine uh, the percentage of the tax levy, as well as vote on some additional um, exemption options available under tax classification. Um, two of the main components uh, when we're dealing with uh, the tax rate are town valuation and property, the property tax levy. Town valuation is where I come in. I'm gonna give you a brief overview of what happened with the town as far as valuation. What we saw in the market, some of the trends that we saw, and give you a breakdown of um, the property classes, uh, the residential versus commercial, uh, what happened from last year till this year. I'll also give you an idea of uh, the type of uh, growth that we saw, both on residential and C I P. C I P is a commercial, industrial, personal property in case uh, uh, anyone's on wondering. The other um, component is the property tax levy. Uh, the tax levy is the portion of the budget that gets paid through property taxes. It's usually the largest portion of the budget. I kind of want to just give you a summary of this year's budget. Um, and how some of the uh, the the big budget number was chipped away through state aid, local receipts, and how we actually arrived at the property tax levy uh, this year. And um, as we move along, you'll see how both of these components just kind of come together uh, when we're looking at the tax rate options. Uh, there are four, there are actually four uh, choices uh, when we deal with the uh, classification hearing. Uh, first and foremost, it's the single rate versus the split rate. We'll uh, go over that and I want to make sure that everybody is just like uh, uh, knows what's going on. We'll we'll hammer that away. Uh, the other three, uh, a lot of towns don't really talk about them legally. I'm supposed to just uh, at least give you a brief overview on them. Uh, the open space discount, residential exemption and small commercial exemption. Um, we don't have any open space parcels here, so it doesn't really apply. And as far as the other two, because of the makeup of the town, um, they really don't make sense for Northborough. Uh, I'm I'm just gonna um, give you a brief overview on all of them. And again, um, ask me any questions, um, uh, if there are any. Uh, as far as F Y twenty-four, um, the values are based on how the property stood as of January one, twenty twenty-three. Uh, and they were primarily developed from sales from calendar twenty-two, commercial, industrial, income and expense data. Uh, field inspections from my staff and personal property forms of lists. Now, we assess uh, property uh, at a hundred percent full fair cash value here in the Commonwealth and pretty much all of New England, meaning your assessed value should reflect what's going out there in the market. Uh, for example, if the type of property that you own, if uh, it's consistently selling, those types of properties are consistently selling for around five hundred thousand. Your assessment should be in that ballpark. It doesn't have to be right at um, market value. It should be close. Uh, the state has certain guidelines that I have to follow uh, when I run my sales analysis every year. Uh, they have what we call um, acceptable guideline, uh, acceptable ranges. So uh, a good uh, range is within ten percent of market value. Um, commercial properties. Um, unlike the residential properties that are based on sales, commercial and industrial properties are based on the income approach. I'm basically taking the potential gross income minus expenses. Um, that leaves me with a net operating income, uh, that's uh, capitalized over a rate of return. When we say potential gross income on a commercial property, it's not the business income. It's actually the rentable um, space of that building. So if I have two um, uh, apartment buildings, ones uh, a bunch of uh, uh, one bedrooms, the other ones are a bunch of three bedrooms. A three bedroom rents for more than one bedroom. So it's it's that type of concept. We're looking at the potential gross income uh, of the properties in town. Uh, all the commercial and industrial properties uh, send us uh, well, we send them um, some uh, data inquiries. They send them back. We get an idea. It gives us an idea of the types of rent that that they're getting, the types of expenses, so that way I'm able to create um, what we call market rent and market expenses uh, for those particular types of property. What kind of rents are office space getting? Uh, what kind of uh, rents and expenses are retail space getting? That type of thing. Uh, that way, again, I'm able to value them based on uh, the rental um, portion and the expense portion uh, of what's going on in calendar twenty-two. Uh, personal property forms of list. All businesses in town are subject to personal property uh, taxes. It kind of depends on how large your operation is and the type of um, ownership that you have. Um, most accounts send us a form of list. It's basically an audit of uh, an audit list of everything that uh, you have. Uh, machinery and equipment um, used in the day-to-day operations uh, of your business. Uh, after reviewing all of this, uh, we uh, make our adjustments. We submit them to the state uh, for their blessing. Um, our final values were actually approved back in August. So I've been kind of waiting for this hearing since August. And um, some of these statistical averages that we saw um, are right here. Single-family properties increased by about seven point seven percent, condos by eight percent. Uh, twos and threes uh, by three percent. Some of the smaller apartments and commercial space by ten percent. Uh, the the big industrial and the larger apartment complexes by seventeen percent. And personal property uh, overall by ten percent. And the town um, as a whole, increased in value uh, by three hundred sixty-seven million or about nine point four uh, percent um, from last year. Just wanted to give you a visual of what's going on from last year till this year, excuse me. Um, again, uh, total value of the town went from three point eight billion to four point two billion. The makeup of the town also um, shifted a little bit. Last year, we had about seventy-four percent um, residential. Um, and almost twenty-six percent C I P. This year, um, went down, it shifted about one percent. Uh, residential makes up about uh, seventy-three percent um, of the the total valuation. The C I P uh, is about twenty-seven percent. Um, it's been pretty steady, kind of like this. Again, I just wanted to give you all a visual of um, uh, the makeup of the town. The makeup of the town is um, it plays an important role in um, the tax levy, as you'll see. Um, these value increases are a combination of both market adjustments and new growth. Um, throughout the year, uh, my staff uh, tries to capture as much new growth as possible. When we when we talk about new growth, it's anything new to the tax base uh, that wasn't um, captured last year. If I have a piece of land, one year, somebody uh, starts to build a house on it, the value of that new building is captured as quote-unquote new growth. Uh, the town saw a total of a forty point nine million in new growth valuation. Some of that included ten single-family homes, uh, two townhouses, couple of warehouse and retail buildings, a few vacant lots. And several major renovation and addition projects. The majority of our new growth, uh, because we're so built out uh, come from um, the major renovation and addition projects. Uh, this uh, tool uh, new growth valuation uh, equals about six hundred and six thousand in taxable uh, dollars. This number is actually used in our uh, levy limit calculation. Um, the state kind of limits uh, how much uh, we can levy from one year to the next, um, as you'll see. Um, so this number is important in 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 that uh, process. Um, same thing. I just wanted to give you a visual of what's going on with the town. Um, as far as new growth, it was pretty much a half and half, twenty million of of new growth that uh, the town saw was on the resi residential side. C I P, most of it was on the personal property side. Um, you have your um, usual suspects, uh, uh, Amazon, FedEx, um, some of the big ticket items, uh, also mass electric, um, and um, some of the other big utilities, they're us, they usually make a up a portion of the new growth on the personal property side. Uh, we've discussed uh, the property values. Now, let's take a look at the property tax levy. Property tax levy is the portion of the budget that gets paid through property taxes. It's usually the largest portion of uh, the budget. If we just go down uh, the list, uh, we can just uh, see uh, this year's um, budget and how uh, we kind of just like chip away at it. This year's uh, total uh, town budget, that this includes all the appropriations plus some additional um, items like um, uh, what we pay into Worcester Retirement, the Worcester Retirement Fund, okay? Uh, we slowly chip away at at the big uh, big budget um, number through state aid, local receipts, free cash, enterprise funds. Um, every uh, city in town gets a portion of state aid. Uh, that amount is not the same across the board. It kind of depends on uh, how many kids are enrolled in school, um, the size of um, the town itself. Um, our portion of state aid is about five point nine million. That kind of chips away at a big budget number. Uh, local receipts, any type of um, anticipated payment at the local level also chips away at the big budget number. Uh, licenses, fees, fines, uh, permits. The biggest local receipt uh, every city in town gets is um, the motor vehicle exercise, um, the uh, car taxes, uh, those chip away at uh, the big budget number. Uh, we also have sewer and water um, enterprise funds. Uh, C P A and free cash also chip away at at the big budget number. We are then left with uh, the property tax levy. This is the portion uh, that the property owners uh, need to make up um, to pay for um, the budget. Uh, there are limits, uh, again, uh, on the amount of uh, levy, well, the amount that uh, a town can levy from year to year. If if you've all heard of Prop two and a half, it it kind of um, gives the state um, well, it gives the town certain limitations and the state kind of just checks in on us every year just to make sure that we're complying. And uh, just to let everybody know, I have a lot of uh, property owners coming in, trying to uh, quote me Prop two and a half. It's not on the individual bill. It's the entire property tax levy. And it actually uh, doesn't have to do with the levy itself. It's the levy limit, okay? We actually take last year's levy limit, add your two and a half percent, add your new growth that we just talked about. And uh, we get our new levy limit uh, for F Y twenty-four. Now, the law uh, allows us to add certain things like debt exclusions and capital expenditures or exclusions uh, to this levy limit. Um, normally, if there you if you have some uh, large project like a school or senior center, you don't have like twenty or thirty million just lying around. You usually borrow um, to pay for the project. Uh, this debt exclusion um, uh, is uh, for uh, I believe like five or six projects uh, from the past that we're paying uh, the principal and interest uh, for this year. Okay, um, we you have all that up, uh, and you're given um, the new maximum allowable levy. Okay, and again, this is just a failsafe. The state just wants to make sure that we are in compliance with Prop two and a half. And as you see, our maximum allowable levy, uh, the amount that we can tax up to is about sixty-four point eight million. Our estimated levy is about sixty point seven. So we're about four million below that maximum allowable. So this actually does save um, uh, the property owners a little bit of money. Uh, it has to do with um, good planning, um, good estimates, uh, when we're doing uh, the budget from year to year, okay? Any questions so far? I'm sorry if I'm like going really fast. No? Okay. Um, okay, the reason why you're here, uh, the select board must vote to determine the percentage of the property tax levy uh, to be borne um, by each. uh to be borne um by each real and personal property. Uh you actually have two options, you're gonna adopt a residential factor of one. Uh that result will uh be all property um classes being taxed at the same rate, it's called the single tax rate. The other one, uh the other option is adopting a factor of less than one. Um uh when and if that uh occurs, the residential share actually goes down, the CIP share goes up. So the major classes will be uh taxed at different rates, it's uh what we call the split tax rate or the dual tax rate. And just to give you a visual, we have the property tax levy that we just talked about, uh when we chip away at the big budget number. Um we also have the new value of the town, the four point two billion. If I divide the estimated levy by the new value of the town, I actually get an estimated single tax rate, it's this is uh the basic formula behind it. Um if uh the select board chooses to do so, you can leave all this uh uh as is. You're actually gonna choose a residential factor here that's gonna be multiplied against the residential share of the property uh of the um of the uh of the town class, so one times any number equals one, so uh if that is your choice, residential uh share stays the same, Marshall's uh share stays the same, everybody pays the same rate. Um it is uh known again as the single tax rate. Should the select board decide this, then the estimated tax rate for FY twenty-four will be fourteen dollars and twenty-eight cents per thousand for all classes. Um and based on the average single-family value and the average commercial value for FY twenty-four, uh these are the resulting um tax bills. Um tax bill on the average single-family property will be about eighteen, eight thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars. This is an increase of about three three hundred and forty-two doll- forty-two dollars, or about four percent um compared to last year. On the commercial side, um the average tax bill uh will be about twenty-two thousand dollars. It's an increase of about four thousand dollars sin- um compared to last year. Uh historically, the select board has voted uh a residential factor of one uh resulting in a single tax rate. Just wanted to give you um uh a ten-year look back, um uh the town has never, um well, the last ten years has never uh chosen um uh a dual tax rate, and as you can see, these are some of the assessments over the years, some of the uh tax bills uh for the single-family property um leading up to now. It's about a three percent to about five percent increase every year. Um other than FY twenty and FY twenty-one, those values and tax bills were kind of flat, I believe that was um the COVID years, we were dealing with the pandemic um at that time. Um and as far as state rankings, uh if I'm going from highest tax bill to the lowest, we kind of like rank like a high sixties in the seventy range, okay?
Out of three fifty-one?
Out of three fifty-one, yes, sir. And I was told uh like uh how how do we fare as far as uh assessed values and tax bills with our neighbors? Um this is just kind of a visual of just our immediate neighbors, Northborough is here in the red. Uh we're usually like right in the middle, um we we're very neck and neck with uh uh Shrewsbury as far as assessed values for our single-family um properties, uh we're actually usually just uh below uh Shrewsbury. Uh just to give you an idea, this year, uh the average value for a single-family property is about six hundred twenty-four doll- uh thousand. Uh Shrewsbury is gonna be like six sixty, so again, we're always just slightly below Shrewsbury. Uh as far as uh the tax bill on the average single um fam- excuse me, family, we're always right in the middle, um we're always right below uh Westboro and Southborough and um just a little bit more than Brafton and Shrewsbury. I don't really like using Shrewsbury as um a good comp. The town and their budget, they're they're kind of double our size, double this, they're they're actually more comparable to to Marlborough. Um but again, I was asked to just, you know, give you a visual of um just the immediate um surrounding uh towns. Um the other option, residential factor of less than one, which uh indicates a split tax rate. When we say shift the burden, um the levy itself does not change, you're actually shifting who pays what. Um so the makeup of the town again right now is about seventy-three percent residential, twenty-seven percent commercial. So in this example of a ten percent shift, you're actually shifting uh a portion of the residential share over to the commercial, so uh the uh commercial properties, instead of coming up with twenty-seven percent of the levy, they're gonna now come up with uh close to thirty percent of the levy, okay? When this happens, um the CIP share goes up, the residential share actually goes down from seventy-three percent down to seven uh to seventy percent with this ten percent shift. The tax rates also change um if there is a shift. Uh as you can see, the residential uh tax uh rate goes from fourteen twenty-eight to thirteen seventy-five. Uh CIP goes from fourteen twenty-eight to fifteen seventy-one. Um the effect on the tax bills also kind of follows that trend. With the ten percent shift, the residential tax bill on average will see a savings of about three hundred and thirty dollars. The commercial tax bill, however, will go up uh about twenty-two hundred dollars, okay? Uh, see. Uh just to want to give you an idea of some of the percent shift options and kind of how they affect the tax bills, both on the residential side and the commercial side. The commer- uh the residential side does um get some savings, the more sh- uh the more you shift over, but uh because of the nature of the uh property values, the the property values uh on the commercial side are much, much higher, so they are impacted more significantly, um. Uh the way I see it, it's about for every dollar savings on the residential side, the commercial tax bill uh will see an increase of about six dollars and eighty-five cents, okay? Are there any questions here um on this chart? No?
Number board questions here?
I have a question.
Sure.
But it's on slide number fifteen.
Lee, Lee, that's up to you whether you want to double back or not?
Sure.
Yeah.
Wait, maybe it's for, so I had that the commercial tax rate is going up eighteen percent. Was that this slide or the one before? Yeah. Tax on increase of eighteen percent as opposed to
This is, this is last year's uh uh average uh commercial tax bill versus this year's average commercial tax bill if nothing is shifted, i- this is just how they're just falling.
And and that's because commercial property increased so much in value?
Little bit of value, yes, um. Uh again, um the adjustments that I make are follow the market, um some of my properties uh were kind of on the low side, I do have sales, I do have um INEs that kind of tell me that they were assessed uh not as uh their assessment to sale ratios weren't uh as tight, if that makes sense. Um but but yes, this is uh last year's uh average um tax bill versus this year's average tax bill, just left alone.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. A related related question, did you um have any particularly large commercial properties that went onto the books?
Went onto the books, um there were just a a handful of um warehouses, not 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 the big distribution ones, but a couple of um warehouses, a few retail um uh properties, but 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 nothing super significant.
Thank you.
Okay. See, so some pros and cons with the um residential factor of less than one. Uh first and foremost, it does offer residential property owners some tax relief. Um some of the cons, um it does shift the burden from the residential onto the commercial, which already pay a higher uh 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 in uh higher individual share because of their high uh individual values. Uh it's not really seen as business-friendly, um a lot of prospective um investors and businesses, uh the ones that do call up um my office and other uh neighboring towns. One of the first things they ask is, hey, what's your tax rate? Hey, what what are your taxes? Are you a uh single versus split? Um it is one of the first things that they ask. Um uh property expenses including taxes uh do get typically passed on to their tenants, uh both the small commercial and the big ones, uh the uh big distribution warehouses that uh uh you all know that that come to mind. Um you might not know it, but they actually uh don't own the buildings, they're actually tenants, okay? Um and those are just some of the highlights of the pros and cons. Um if there are any questions on the uh single or split, I'll answer them now before I move on.
Yes, hi, you said um earlier um that the the commercial rate was really for um market rents and expenses, a potential gross income. So that was, that means that that commercial, that commercial tax is really for the owners of the properties that rent to the tenants. And normally, the tenants are the businesses, is that correct? I mean, most of the time, um the there's not a lot of owner-operated businesses where they own the building and then they own the business inside of the building.
You're you're, yes, you're correct, uh the majority of the businesses in town are tenants uh that that pay some type of gross or um net lease, um typically, um it's they're they're kind of built into their rent, a a lot of the triple-net leases have taxes, like uh provisions that pay a portion, if not all, of the tax burden um from the property owner, it is passed down.
It's passed down directly like that, where it comes out of their gross profit, so to speak?
Um yes, uh depending on um the the type of lease, many of these leases are long-term, um uh five through twenty-year um length leases, and there are provisions that uh the tenants uh pay a portion of the tax.
So that if if we said that Amazon is a a tenant?
Yep.
Uh then are they, are they also, well, you wouldn't necessarily know this question, but are they also part of that um group that would have their, have the owner's tax passed down to them?
I can tell you for a fact that um a majority of the big distribution warehouses almost all of them are tenants and have those type of provisions in in their leases built in.
Okay, so they do actually, then they become more responsible for 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 providing, you know, tax revenue for the town, since they use more of the roads and the police and fire services and such.
Right.
All right, so but it is kind of interesting, could just to go back to your comment that people call and ask about, you know, uh business-friendly uh because of the business values, I mean, but isn't that usually business-friendly, isn't that usually considered a smaller uh business owners?
It's 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 both, because we we have to lump in, we're not separating smaller and larger, we're we're lumping them all in together. I know um we're always talking about beautifying uh downtown and making it business-friendly. Higher taxes or a a dual rate is usually not um considered business-friendly, if that makes sense. If I have an option to open up here in town versus a neighboring town, I'm I I'm gonna choose the the cheaper option, because uh the taxes are uh a large expense of 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 my uh my business operation.
Okay.
Okay. Alrighty, um additional uh tax rate options, uh we have open space discount, residential exemption, and small commercial exemption. Um open space discount, um we we you sometimes hear uh it in um planning and conservation, um here in the the assessing world, it's basically privately-owned land that's kind of left in its natural condition where anybody can just uh use it. I don't have any open space um classification here in town, I don't, I believe uh for the last ten years, we have not used this um classification. It's rarely used, I think it it's because of um liability issues, uh if somebody comes onto my land and and breaks their ankle, they can actually sue me, you know, because it happened on my property, so uh for this option here, uh there are no parcels in town with this classification, uh so there's no need to vote on this. Uh residential exemption, so we talked about um pushing the burden from residential to commercial. Uh in this uh option, the residential exemption, it's actually shifting the burden from owner-occupied properties over to the non-owner-occupied properties. You see this in places like Boston, Cambridge, Brookline, you have a lot of high-rises, a lot of apartment buildings that are non-owner-occupied. Uh those municipalities um chose to shift the burden from the owner-occupied over to um those apartment complexes, same thing down by the Cape, a lot of uh vacation homes, a lot of uh second homes um that make up those uh municipalities. Uh those towns chose to shift the burden from um uh the owner-occupied onto the non-owner, all right? Uh here in our town, it it really doesn't make sense, because the majority of our our residential properties are already owner-occupied, you're you'd actually be shifting this exemption onto yourself and actually increasing the tax rate for the residential um properties. Um just to show you what I mean, these are all the um residential properties uh for this year, um these are the total parcels and the value of all the residential properties, about three point one billion. And uh the burden of uh the re- on the residential properties is that amount, uh giving us a a tax rate here. If I, if if I'm sorry, if the select board chose to put a ten percent exemption on these properties, the majority of them would get that exemption, it actually drops everybody's value down. So when values go down, tax rate goes up, uh values go up, tax rate goes down. The levy stays the same, but the tax rate actually gets increased because of this option, okay? Um if the makeup of our town was a little bit different, if we have a a lot of um apartment complexes or some secondary homes, vacation homes, it would make sense um here because of of the makeup of of the residential properties, it's actually like eighty-nine point six-five percent, almost ninety percent owner-occupied, it just really doesn't make sense uh for Northborough, okay? Uh small commercial exemption, same thing, um it's a shift in the burden just in the uh uh commercial um class. Uh it actually shifts the burden from lower-valued commercial properties onto higher-valued commercial properties. Some of the eventual uh exemption guidelines, uh it has to be a commercial buil- uh business, not industrial, cannot have more than ten employees, uh the building value cannot be more than a million. Um and uh most importantly, the exemption goes to the building owner, not the business. Uh some of the reasons why uh it's not really used, only fourteen out of three hundred and fifty-one communities used uh this exemption, uh there's really no way to regulate it, okay? And uh most importantly, most of the um commercial uh properties, they they're actually uh they rent and lease uh their workspace. Um from the smallest ones all the way to to the big distribution warehouses, uh they're all tenants. This exemption goes to the um property owner, okay? Um let's see.
A question on that, Lee, um the the building value can't exceed a million in assessed value, so that's probably another large limiting factor uh on that, I I bet we we have a lot of what people would call small to mid-sized commercial buildings that probably have a valuation over a million dollars.
Right, yes, exactly, that's true.
So it'd only be those under that that would benefit, even if the business was small. If a business is located, if there are three businesses in a larger building that's worth more than a million dollars, they wouldn't benefit.
They would not qualify, right?
Yeah.
Right. Okay, um just wanted to show you um the uh top uh ten taxpayers, um just to give you a visual, um and I think that's all I have here, um the Board of Assessors did review all this information, and here are some of my our recommendations. Uh because again, pretty much the the makeup of the town, uh the Board of Assessors recommends a residential factor of one in the continued use of a single tax rate. Um there are no open space parcels in town, so uh this option is not applicable. And as far as residential exemption and small commercial exemption, uh the Board of Assessors has determined that these options don't really pertain to Northborough. uh, the Board of Assessors has determined that these options don't really pertain to Northborough because of the makeup of residential and commercial. So these options should not be considered. And I think that's it. I'll stop sharing.
Actually have a question on twenty-eight. Um, one slide back from where you are. So the very top one, AVB, that's Avalon, correct?
That is Avalon, yes.
Yeah, and they, so that's consider, even though it's, uh, residential apartments, that's considered commercial property value?
We revalue, um, those, uh, large apartments, uh, through the income approach.
Right. So, so if there, if there were a residential shift, this would benefit Avalon positively or negatively in the dollar amount?
They would actually benefit, uh, uh, Avalon positively in the dollar amount because of their high assessment.
So they, I'm sorry, so they would save money or pay extra?
They would save money. They would save money.
So that's considered res- residential?
It, it, it is. All, all living, living, um, space properties like, uh, the one, like the one class. Uh, they are, um, uh, valued as, uh, well, they're deemed residential.
Okay. Good.
Okay. Alrighty, I'll, I'll stop sharing, uh, unless there are any other questions?
Julian.
Oh, yes.
So Lee, you didn't, you didn't go over too much personal property tax.
Okay.
So, for example, Amazon leases, right? Do you assess Amaz- Do, do you assess the renters' personal property?
The business itself, uh, are responsible for their own personal property. So if I'm a business owner and if I have tenants in my building and they operate certain businesses, personal property would belong to those tenants. Okay?
Okay, so, so is it the tenant who discloses their personal property or the owner of the building?
The, the personal property belongs to the tenant.
To the tenant.
Business.
And, and how do you figure that out? How, do you go into a business and say, can I need to assess your personal property or is it a, an honor system? How does that work?
Little bit of an honor system, but, um, the existing accounts, uh, send us the form of list. If there was a new business in town, we get a list from, uh, the town clerk, um. They get visited, um, by my staff or the vendor that we use specifically for commercial property, um, valuation. Um, and, uh, once they're on our, uh, tax roll, uh, they'll get sent, uh, the form of list every year just to make sure that they're still there and their equipment, um, has not changed. And if they've added on, we can, we consider any add-ons to be, uh, quote unquote, new growth on the person property side.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Please.
And do you, do you go to the, um, the business personal property side? And like you do with residential, every five years or every two years, what is it? When do you go into make those adjustments just by, you know, visual?
We use, we, we, on the personal property, um, accounts, we have a vendor that we use. Um, we're kind of on a cyclical cycle, so they'll take, uh, a hundred or two hundred accounts, uh, visit those and just, uh, visit, uh, the ones that they did not visit, uh, the next year. So in a cyclical cycle. Uh, the state wants both resident, um, um, residential and CIP, um, properties to be visited once every ten years. So this has been an ongoing, uh, cyclical, uh, program.
Okay.
Okay? Any other questions? Alright, I'll stop sharing, uh, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Thanks, Lee. Hey, um, let's have, uh, some, some comments from questions from the board and then we'll open it up to the public as this is a public hearing. Um, our, our primary decision tonight is, um, is whether to continue with what Northborough has always had, which is a single tax um, or whether to do anything different. Um, you know, the assessors have, have presented one alternative if we went that way. Um, I've expressed my opinion in the past, which is that a single tax rate is the better way to go. But, uh, but we are a board of five, so I, I would look forward to hearing any comments or questions from members of the board. Kristen.
Um, so this is my third time voting on this and, um, I, I think especially since we are, um, working towards our downtown revitalization and bringing in businesses, um, I think right now would be a bad time to change the tax rate. That's my two cents.
Thanks, Kristen. Laura.
Hi, Lee. Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair. Hi, Lee. Thank you for the presentation today. I really enjoyed how in-depth you were in this explaining it all. Um, I, I think similar to Kristen, right now with so much uncertainty in the economy, as much as I love the idea of, of finding creative ways to save money, I don't think this is the right time to further burden our businesses. Uh, but I do, I, I appreciate the, the thought that we've put into this and I do think we're gonna have a lot of work on our hands to figure how to save money, but I don't think that putting that burden on the businesses is a route that I would like to take right now. Uh, but I do appreciate a, all of this information today.
Thank you, Laura. Any other comments or questions?
I see. There wasn't.
Kristen. Uh, sorry, Lisa, did you have something or? I heard, I heard your voice, but I, but I saw Kristen's hand go up, so I'm not quite sure what I saw.
I was just gonna add, thank you, Lee. That was a really great presentation. I really appreciated it. Yeah, I, I, um, that was really nice. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Lisa?
Yes, I, I, actually, the last sound that you heard from my microphone was not me. I was throwing my voice across the room, talking, barking. Um, um, I, you know, I too, I'm, you know, very happy with just keeping things as they are with the single tax rate. I'm sometimes um, surprised at how much answers and, and questions are put on this dual tax rate every year. Um, I think we've pretty much stayed the same. We've looked out for as many things as we can look out and I don't know that next year might be different with a lot of new things coming on the board. Uh, not us, but on the board. And, um, and I think that, uh, we're all pretty well, you know, we're, we're considering everybody. I don't think we're just trying to shift anything to anybody just to create a problem. So, um, you know, like almost, it's almost a little bit too much about nothing to, to keep going on about the single tax rate, dual tax rate sometimes. But, um, you know, I don't see any reason why we should be changing it this year.
Thanks, Lisa. Um, if there are no other comments or questions from the board, I'll open it up to the public. If, uh, any member of the public wishes to, uh, to offer any input or ask any questions, raise your electronic hand and I'd be more than happy to recognize you. I'll admit somewhat surprised that I don't see a chain of hands going up. Okay, here comes a hand. Alright, Fran Baxton. I'll bring you in. If you could unmute your microphone, identify yourself and let, you know, let us know what's on your mind.
Baxton at seventy-six Cedar Hill Road. I just want to say thank you for the, the comments, uh, certainly the presentation and the comments of the members of the board. Um, having sat on the board for six years, I know that it is something about something, though it, as long as we continue going with the single tax rate, it does sound like, uh, um, quite an exercise. I will say that I think that we have to look at the math. The reason why, you know, those of us who've been in town for many years, our tax bills go up is because the assessed values of our homes are going up so much. I, when I came to town, the tax rate was seventeen and a half dollars. Now it's fourteen and a half, yet my tax bill is four times what it was when I moved here. So, um, having appreciation for the fact that it's the assessed values that are causing the, um, tax rates to go up on the residents. Um, changing the tax rate really is not gonna make enough of a difference. So I appreciate the fact that you are leaning towards, um, leaving it as a single tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. I see Karen Chapman. Karen, if you could unmute yourself and identify yourself, let us know what's on your mind.
Good evening. My name's Karen Chapman. I'm President of the Corde nine forty-five Regional Chamber of Commerce. First of all, I want to appreciate the great presentation done by, uh, Lee. Very exhaustive information. And also to recognize that I know you all received a, a letter submitted by me and a lot of letters from the town residents and local business owners in support of single tax classification. Um, a lot of the great reasons stated, um, have already been outlined by your town, uh, Assessor Lee, but more importantly, I want to thank the select board members for their, at this point, continued support of a single tax classification. I know you're looking at strongly at revitalizing your downtown and I truly believe this is the right direction to go to. So, thank you so much and, um, I appreciate all the great information that was shared tonight.
Thank you very much, Karen. Okay, if there are any other members of the public that wish to speak, if you could raise your virtual hands. I don't see any up right now. Alright. Ask and you shall receive. Got a couple here. Jason Perro, if you could, uh, identify yourself, let us know what's on your mind.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, we do.
Great. Uh, Jason Pro, twenty-seven Treetop Circle. Uh, speaking as a resident, but from the perspective of having served on board for the nine years prior to this tax classification hearing and having uh, participated in those nine prior ones, um, I do want to, uh, uh, acknowledge the board's apparent position in, uh, by their comments expressed to maintain a single tax rate. I do think it's, uh, something that we need to preserve to, uh, continue to promote commercial, uh, and industrial development in town and, uh, through that, through the expansion of commercial and industrial valuation, increase their, uh, their proportion of the town valuation and of the town tax levy. And then, you know, in, in combination with that, uh, provides a mitigating effect on, on the residential side. Um, the information that I saw in the packet, um, was entirely seemingly in support of the single tax rate. Uh, um, if uh, I'm a little puzzled by some of the comments of the board members because I think in other venues, uh, at times they have suggested looking at a dual tax rate. And that has spurred some reaction among the business community and some residents. So, uh, if, if there's some uh, uh, lack of understanding about that, I would say it comes from that, uh, that past representation and past positions that they may have taken, um, in that regard. Just, you know, to the extent this does come up, uh, uh, consideration of a dual tax rate in the future, I would suggest that it's not something that can be evaluated and decided within the context of a single tax classification meeting. Uh, it's certainly much more complex than other undertakings that the town uh, has done and, and, uh, requires something on the order of a year-long study to fully understand any effects that would accrue from that, uh, positive or negative, and then make a policy decision based on that. Uh, there hasn't been any, uh, notification to the public by the board as a body of any interest or intent to explore exposing, imposing a dual tax rate. There's been no motivation or policy goal articulated. There's been no gate data gathered, no outreach for public input from taxpayers of all property classes. No assessment of how any increase on the commercial and industrial valuation side uh, would be affected by a dual tax rate and whether those changes would counteract the intended benefit to the residential class. No analysis of how a dual tax rate would impair the town's ability to attract economic development opportunities in competition with our neighboring communities. No comparison of tax rate policy in communities similar to Northborough across the Commonwealth. And whether any such similar communities that impose a dual tax rate regret doing so. No determination of a target residential factor, a target shift amount. No specification of whether a shift would be fixed or adaptive, and if adaptive, by what criteria? No implementation plan. Uh, I, I'm citing all of these things to explain or at least illustrate the complexity of making this decision. And so as I said, uh, I don't anticipate that this is the kind of decision that can take place within the single, uh, within a single, uh, hearing. Uh, it's something that, uh, if there is will on the board to pursue that, they need to articulate it, they need to explain it, and they need to conduct an appropriate long-term evaluation to fully understand the effects before attempting to implement it. Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thanks, Jason. Okay, I don't see any other hands up. Before we close the hearing, I'll, um, open it up to, uh, members of the board or anybody else on the meeting. If anybody has any additional comments or questions before we close the hearing. Lisa?
Uh, I have a couple. Uh, first off, I think we stated that we weren't interested in doing that right now. I'm kind of surprised we heard all that about what we need to do. I think when the time comes, if this board decides to do that, we will go about doing it as thoughtful and as researching as possible. So thank you for reminding us that that would be how to do it, but I'm pretty sure we'd probably do that. Um, I have also knows that all the letters that we received, um, from, um, residents and, uh, business owners in relationship, um, for the letter from the, um, Corde nine, it was interesting that was more, almost twice as many residents versus businesses that was supporting not raising the rate, since they're seventy-five percent of the tax base and the commercial is only ten. So that's kind of an interesting, uh, thought. Why, why would so many residents be supporting so little businesses? That's kind of a crazy, crazy numbers. I don't understand why that happened, but I do want to do one thing. Um, I hear from a lot of seniors that talk about the dual tax rate and I think they're the ones that feel the most pain because they're on the fixed incomes. And, uh, one, one gentleman in particular wanted me to read, uh, a very brief, uh, remark that he was making and I think since he wasn't able to do it himself, I'd like to do that right now. Um, he writes that the implement full cost, and, and again, I'm only doing this as a, a service for the individuals that don't get a chance to represent themselves.
I, I'm gonna make a suggestion, Lisa. If these are words you agree with, I think it's perfectly fine to go ahead and read a letter if they are words that, um, maybe they're not your, they're not akin to your words. Um, maybe there are other avenues that that person can get this into the record.
Well, I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know that I'm going to say I, um, I support, I support all residents. And I feel that they have, they, they need to hear, have a voice, just like everybody else who has a voice. So I would like to do it under, under that and it's not very long. So, um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna sort of read it. I, I did not edit this. I've not, you know, I didn't ask for all of that. I just want to make that upfront. So, the, the remarks were implement full cost accounting into budget process and financial analysis in decision-making. The goal is to cut expenses and to achieve a more balanced, fair budget. What's being called an economy is actually profits made by a few that is widening the financial inequality of town residents and diminishing their means to keep ahead of expenses and living costs. There is no proof or studies that show that low taxes to businesses and wealthy will improve the health and economy of our community or town. In fact, it's just the opposite. A dual tax system is needed to ensure that residents of all ages and financial means can live comfortably. Local businesses rely on the pa- patronage of local residents and their success is that of an individual's family expendable income, not the other way around. The single taxes in reality using taxpayers' money to subsidize local businesses as residents' expense. Uh, we pay the price in property taxes and service costs increases while the profits and costs benefits go to the various businesses. This is a divisive and inequitable economy and it's not sustainable as we already know. Now again, that's one of the seniors and, um, and I just felt that it was necessary to have, um, somebody else's voice. We already know what we're gonna do, but I do think that it's nice to be able to offer that. So thank you for.
While you were speaking, Lisa, we had two more hands come up from the public. Uh, Scott Rogers, bringing you in. If you could, uh, unmute, identify yourself, let us know what's on your mind, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Twenty-six Tomahawk Drive. Uh, just to answer the question on why you saw so much of reaction this year, it was due to statements made by two board members in earlier meetings that it was thought that there was an indication that, um, that's at least one and possibly two were interested in the split tax rate. As to the reasons why you saw lots of residents respond is I think residents realize that without studying the situation, simply shifting to a dual tax rate is really just a short-term gimmick to reduce residential taxes. But we'd see do, do the impact that from Lee's presentation, you saw how it has a, um, a affect a spiral that those increases are passed down to the tenants. Those increases are passed down then to the, uh, patrons of those businesses. You'll also see, uh, one bullet in this slide that the increased taxes then reduces the increased taxes then reduces the valuation of the bills, businesses, which then shifts more the burden onto the residents directly. So, the reason you saw my own letter and letters from other this um other residents is that there's an understanding that unduly putting that burden on the commercial businesses does lead to direct increases uh in subsequent years to the residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Uh, Fran Backstrom, back for uh for more. Fran, if you could unmute, and we already know who you are. Let us know what's on your mind.
It's okay. Well, I will say that I am a senior on a fixed income, and I took the time to come to this meeting um in person. But I would, just from a point of origin standpoint, all the letters that were submitted are on the record as part of your um, the packet and the public record. If um select board member, Miss Sully, was reading a letter, um, I think if it's going to be part of the record, it needs to be identified as to who wrote it, just like all the other letters that are written in part of the record. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. I'll agree. That is, that is my preference that if members of the public want to get, get a letter in, that's the best way to do it.
Yep.
But.
It's but this is by Gib Chase. So.
Excellent. Thank you, Gib, for for offering those comments. Um, alright. Any other members of the board? Julianne?
So, first of all, um, should we mention how many people sent us letters in favor of the single?
You certainly can if you'd like, yeah. Quite a number.
Yeah, I, it was over fifty that on last count, right?
I did, I didn't count, so I I'll trust you to that, but it's sounds on the right.
Approximately fifty. And I I just want to clear something up. Um, I think that that there's a lot of passion around this and uh, you know, maybe, you know, people have strong opinions about the single tax rate. But if if people are misinterpreting my or or some of our willingness to every year consider all options, then um I don't think that that's a bad thing. Uh, you know, economy changes, the amount of businesses changes, property values change, and to give this a good hard look every year, I think is our responsibility. And if I may, I have one more question for Lee, and I hope it doesn't put you on the spot, but just for our edification, in what circumstance would you recommend a dual tax rate?
Um, if the makeup of the town uh was a little bit more CIP, maybe like a sixty forty, it might make sense. And if the uh larger um uh commercial industrial weren't as significant, so that way it'd be almost like a balance. Um, uh, that would be my only recommendation, I guess. Uh, i- i- if the the commercial class was just slightly higher in in the overall um town valuation.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Julianne, I'll, I'll add my thoughts on that. Um, you know, I, I think that splitting a tax rate may make sense, for example, in a community that is already at a hundred percent commercial build-out and otherwise is no longer interested in attracting businesses. Um, that's not Northborough. That's not going to be Northborough for decades. Um, there may be other communities that fall into that category where maybe for that community it makes sense. Uh, but that's in in my head, that's always been the scenario that, you know, clearly splitting off the tax rate to put more burden on businesses um no longer attracts business. Uh, and I I believe in that firmly. Well, if you're a community that doesn't have to attract business, um that's at least an option you can consider. Uh, it said Northborough, it's, it's not in that scenario and and I don't know if it ever will be, but it it probably won't be in any of our lifetimes. Okay, any other comments or questions? I see no more. Um, hands up in the audience. So, um with that, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing with the Board of Assessors.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to close the public hearing with the Board of Assessors.
And?
Motion's been made by Kristen, seconded by Laura. Any other discussion? All those in favor, Kristen?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
Julianne?
Hi.
Lisa?
Hi.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion on the tax rate?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to maintain a uniform tax rate for all classes of property at a factor of one to oppose the implementation of residential except exemption and to oppose the implementation of a small commercial exemption.
Second.
Motion's been made by Kristen, seconded by Laura. Any other comments or questions? Um, all those in favor, Kristen?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
Lisa?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Lee, thank you very much. You've got your uh your, your tax rate set. Um, really truly appreciate your time with us this evening.
Thank you for having me.
Very, very informative as always.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next up, we have Community Affairs Committee. Um, it was going to be Chair Susie Sizlika, but uh Susie let me know that she has a conflict, so I'll be bringing in Jen Martin. Um, with the request to close Blake Street for the uh two thousand twenty-three annual tree lighting and menorah lighting events. Jen, I'm gonna bring you in. Jen, once you're in, if you could unmute and uh turn around the camera if you'd like.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Jen. How are you?
Everybody. Hi. Hi, so I'm.
Identify yourself for the record.
Sorry?
Do you just identify yourself, say you're, you're Jen Martin?
So, Jen Martin, representing Community Affairs tonight. And um just here to ask permission to close Blake Street for the annual tree lighting on December second for uh from four to six. Uh, we're going to be having the fifth grade Northborough Children's Choir perform. We had Wegmans donate some cocoa and cookies. Uh, Northborough House is providing pizza. And we'll also be accepting cash and food donations for the food pantry and also Toys for Tots donations. Um, and then finally, I believe we have Neil Ellsworth's niece performing the national anthem. So, um, that's about it. We look forward to this event every year, very well attended, and um just wanted to formally request and thank the board for your support.
Thank you very much, Jen. And um, uh, do you want me to speak to the menorah lighting that the Community Affairs Committee is also sponsoring?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sure. Um, you know, I've been part of that since it started a few years ago. Um, we'll be doing that on Wednesday, the thirteenth of December um at about five o'clock in the evening. Um, and uh community is invited. We always have donuts and um I think last year we had some hot chocolate. I don't, I don't really remember. I Community Affairs Committee thankfully takes care of a lot of those things. Um, might have a little bit of music uh in light of um of uh things going on in the Middle East that are attracting uh a lot of attention and a lot of concern for the Jewish population as well as populations of other religions and cultures in the area. Uh, Susie and I've had some discussions of expanding the event this year to um to just just reflect on that and um and and promote a little bit of peace. Uh, and uh, I'm not sure of exactly what that will be. We're still working on that. Um, last year, the um Police Department didn't see it necessary to to formally close the roads. Um, this year it, you know, given some of the things that are going on in the world, it might not be a bad idea. Um, just to take that extra precaution.
Okay.
Um, any questions from the board for uh for Jen or I suppose for myself?
No questions, but thank you. I did it again. I'm sorry. Oh, wait. I'm sorry.
Julianne?
Well, I'm probably gonna say what you were gonna say, Laura. Just thank you so much for all your work putting these events on and all, all year long. It's um it, it makes the, it does so much for the community. So, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you there. This one especially is definitely, it's a good one.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Lisa, go ahead.
Um, I'd also like to thank Jen and and all the committee that puts all this together. That's a lot of work. You do a great job. Um, I think this year too is uh, it's important. I think that we, maybe we could create some sort of a uh asking for peace on earth, which used to be part of the whole.
Yeah.
Reason for doing all this. I think it's, I think there's a lot of different um uh people who are suffering about what's going on in and Middle East and over there where um Palestinians and the and the Jewish community or Israel having a, it's not a difficult time. It's horrific. It's just horrific. I think everybody real, I think here we all realize that this is, it just shouldn't be happening. Just everything shouldn't be happening this way and and it's heartbreaking and that, that it is something that we do notice. And and although we don't say it, uh, I think it's a difficult message to bring up. It's a difficult message to uh to share, but I think it bears sharing. And I know that there are many families um all over the world that are suffering themselves, suffering from watching. And and I wonder why we can't in the two thousand and twenty-three stop all of the senseless killing that goes on throughout the world here every year. So, I wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Any other comments or questions? Um, uh a question as far as practicality, um, the Jen, you had mentioned that the event, is the event four to six? Or is the?
Yes, I believe, well, no, the event is four thirty.
Okay.
Four thirty or five, I think actually five to six, and then we're gonna start setting up four o'clock.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's five PM on the poster that's in the packet.
Yeah, so five o'clock, and then we'll, we'll get there to set up the tables and the lighting and all that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we have, we, we have a draft motion that that asks to close the road from three thirty to six thirty. You think that's, that's, that's appropriate? Gives you a little bit of cushion?
Yes, plenty of time. That'd be great.
Yeah, and obviously, our police department is gonna keep everybody safe if people are still um still, still gathering, uh, you know, come six thirty, they're not gonna let cars in until that's
Right, okay.
Safe.
Okay, great.
And on the, on the menorah, that will, that will also be a five o'clock event. Um, we put in a draft for three thirty, um, three thirty to six thirty, I would say, just for simplicity, keep it the same.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It'd have to be, okay.
Okay.
Okay, um. If there are no other questions, I will entertain um a motion on the uh closing Blake Street for the tree lighting and then afterwards for the Hanukkah menorah lighting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the board a vote to close Blake Street on Saturday, December second twenty twenty-three from three thirty PM to six thirty PM for the tree lighting event, providing that all accessible routes and amenities are maintained.
Second.
Motion's been made by Laura. I'll give the second to Kristen. Any other discussion? Um, all those in favor, Laura?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. And one more motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to close Blake Street on Wednesday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three from three thirty PM to six thirty PM for the menorah lighting event, providing that all accessible routes and amenities are maintained.
Second.
Motion's been made by Laura, seconded by a Julianne. Any other discussion? Um, I will say, I think that that phrase of the motion of providing that all accessible routes and amenities are maintained might be new this year. I appreciate that. Um, so, so good for whoever caught that and added that to the suggestion. Um, any other discussion? All those in favor, uh Laura?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Alright, so we've got our road closures, and hopefully this has also been a little bit of good marketing for your two important events. Um, are there any other events coming up that you'd like to promote from the Community Affairs Committee?
Uh, yes, Kindness Week is coming up. Uh, but first is the Light Up the Town, the Christmas Lights.
Oh, I can't wait for that.
Yeah, but there's no contest this year. It's just gonna be a posted map uh because I think people enjoy going around, but the contests kind of can get a little, I don't know, some comments, and so we're just gonna eliminate the contest. Just keep it fun.
Appreciate it. Okay, excellent. Thank you. Uh, thank you very much for joining us, Jen. Really appreciate it.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, take care. Bye bye.
Thank you.
Bye, thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Alrighty, next up, speaking of holidays, consider update, upcoming holiday schedule for town offices, DPW and Senior Center. Um, Mike or Dave, you wish to speak to this?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, through you, uh, it came to my attention that historically, the board has voted around this time to do some closures around the holidays. Uh, it isn't often that we can do things for our employees to actually um show our appreciation for some of the things that they do for the town. They can't get bonuses. They can't get things like that. So, uh, when we have an opportunity around the holidays to give folks a little bit of time off to spend with their families, I think it's important for us to look at that. So, to that end, uh, I am requesting that the board uh vote to allow us to close uh those facilities that are under the purview of the town administrator, uh town hall, um DPW, library, Senior Center, uh, early on this Wednesday, uh, at noon time on Wednesday for half a day. Um, so the folks can get wherever they're going for Thanksgiving. Uh, also, this year, Christmas and New Year's are on a Monday, uh, which means that the day before, the workday before is the Friday before those holidays, and the Fridays are both half-days uh for the folks at Town Hall. So, I would recommend also that the board close the Town Hall and those other um aforementioned uh facilities on those two Fridays, the twenty-second of December and the twenty-ninth of December, uh, again, to let folks um enjoy those times with their families.
Thanks, Mike. Any uh, any questions? Um, I, I have a question for you, Mike, on some slight differences between the agenda and the um, the draft motion, which is the uh, the agenda item is town offices, DPW and Senior Center. The um uh recommended motion uh says Town Hall offices, which is the same, adds the library but removes DPW. Um, I don't know whether DPW should be part of that or not because it's not really a retail focus, but they probably deserve some time too. Um, and I will, I will also add the library trustees generally um have authority over their building, and they've already taken a motion uh ta- taken a positive vote to, to just mirror whatever the town offices do. So, I, I, I think on behalf of the trustees, the preference would be to not include the library in this because it's already being taken care of. They like to, I think libraries should have some independence.
Yeah, that's fine, Mr. Chairman, but I, 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 I do think that we should include uh the DPW, the Town Hall, the Senior Center. Um, just so that we, we get, you know, that, that precludes the public safety, police, fire. We do need those folks twenty-four seven. Unfortunately, they are not gonna be able to partake in all of this, but certainly the other departments, absent a snowstorm on any of those days, uh, the public works folks, uh, I think should be included as well.
I agree. Okay, any comments or questions? Alright, so I will entertain um a motion, and um I would suggest replace library with DPW in that motion, Lisa.
I move the board to set the upcoming holiday schedule for the Town Hall offices, DPW and Senior Center as follows. Wednesday, November twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, close at noon. Friday, December twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, close for the day. And Friday, December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, also close for the day.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Lisa, seconded by Julianne. Any other discussion? All those in favor, Lisa?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
And Laura?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Thank you very much, Mike and I, for bringing that to our attention. Um, I have a general question, and this is probably more for for Di, as uh, you'll be with us uh, longer probably than Mike will, in at least in similar capacities. Um, that I think it would be helpful for all involved to maybe deal with these earlier in the year. Um, I know the library, for example, every year around this time, we approve closing schedules for the next calendar year. Uh, it might be uh, be helpful for for all involved to just um, so they can plan accordingly. So um, residents, you know, employees, if they want to plan vacations, they know what days they'll be off. Uh, and and anything and everything else might might be good to deal with this sometime in the next couple of months in advance of next holiday season is my suggestion.
Thank you. I agree.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, through you, that one's on me. I would that was on my plate. And then just with all the other things that we were doing in the short time that I'm actually.
It to be honest, it usually it usually comes up right about now. Um, that and that's that's my, that's my concern is it it should be coming up out now for next year, uh, rather than now for now. Appreciate that. Yeah, thanks. Um. Next up, we have extension of appointment of interim town administrator, Michael Gallagher, speaking of people that um, whose whose time in current capacity may be limited. Um, I'll summarize this, that our town charter says that we can appoint an interim town administrator for up to three months and then extend that for a second three months. Um, Mike is is coming up on the uh, the the end of the first three-month period. And um, I forget the exact date that you started, but it's somewhere somewhere around December first is when the three months ends. So because our next meeting is after that, um, I thought it was wise to just formally extend now. Um, your contract stipulates that the moment that we officially sign on the dotted line with a new town administrator, your job here is is done unless we give you some other job to do. Um, but uh, but I think it's important to be consistent with the charter to extend that for the three-month period now so that it doesn't lapse at some point in a couple of weeks.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could through you, uh, first of all, it would be November twenty-ninth, because I started August twenty-ninth, but that's an aside. Um, I did have a conversation with council today about that very topic of what happens. Do I walk out the door and I leave Tim walking in with no transition? Um, council reads that the way that this is, the way the charter is structured, uh, Tim would become the town administrator. My contract doesn't necessarily end. My position ends, but there could be some overlap there and you know, we we can work through that with the contract as it as it currently stands, as opposed to having to rewrite something else. Just an FYI, that was a conversation I had with uh, uh, Brian Mazur at A P.
Excellent. Yeah, it's uh, obviously related. I I think, um, you know, everyone involved would appreciate some overlap. Um, and I would let um, you know, the the incoming town administrator make that determination as to how long he would need you for. Anyone have any comments or questions? Lisa?
Um, just one, where we're probably looking at a month, perhaps, I would think. If December to January, that we're looking hopefully to have a new T A in December, if correct. And I would like to, I'd like to be, you know, again, fiscally responsible and not have too much overlap. Because I think we're gonna have an awful lot of expenses coming up, and I think we need to be cognizant of the taxpayer. So just wanted to make that statement.
Sure. Um, Mike, do you have any anticipation as to how much overlap you'd be talking about?
Um, Mr. Chairman, through you, in in conversations with uh, your incoming town administrator, we were talking days as opposed to months. So um, I I we're not, you know, I love Northborough, but it's a long ride. So, you know, the sooner I get back to Waimi, the better. Um, but uh, I I think that Tim is looking at starting sometime around the eleventh of uh, December, so ball works out by the first of the year, I should be uh, finished with my stint with you folks.
Appreciate that. Any other comments or questions? If none, I will entertain um.
For you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, yes, we we I'm looking at it, and there is no motion.
I just realized that. There's not a motion.
Um, let's see, we we did the we did the exact same thing a few months ago with Bob Reed, so we should be able to find something quickly. Um, race to see who can find it first. I'll bet it's I'll bet it's you. If it isn't even in there. Unless somebody says anything different, I will entertain a motion to extend the um, interim town administrator services of Michael Gallagher for a second three-month period as per Article four, section four dash one, Appointment Qualification Terms of Interim Town Administrator.
Can you amend that and say, uh, can you add for three months or as long as necessary?
It's in the charter, it's three, it says specifically three months. The con- the contract, the the moment that we have Tim on on board as our town administrator, um, Mike is no longer and can no longer be the interim town administrator. We can't say or we can't say as necessary, because that implies longer than three months. We can't do that.
Okay.
Charter limits us.
Alright. So so.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Um, and Di, you you have that? Excellent. Alright, motion made by Julianne, seconded by Laura. Any other discussion? All those in favor, Julianne?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Um, thank you very much, and Mike, thank you very much for your continued service to the town. Um, next up, we have reports. Let's see, uh, Laura, any reports this evening?
I'll be quick. So we had scouting for food in Northborough a week and a half ago. The Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts collected eleven thousand seven hundred and ten food items. Thank you to everybody that donated food. Thank you to all the volunteers that make this really important event possible. I got to attend the Senior Center Country Fair this weekend on Saturday. I love how our seniors throw these really fabulous events that are very timely. There were lots of great crafters there, lots of fun products and um, some awesome raffle prizes. So thanks for everyone that made that event possible and all the vendors that participated and everybody that that joined it. Um, on Veterans Day, on Sunday, I attended the Veterans Day Rolling Rally to celebrate our veterans. This is a really beautiful event where the veterans are driven down Main Street. And Main Street is lined with people holding American flags and saluting the veterans. Um, I would love it if we could get more people out next year. I don't know if there's other venues to help, you know, raise awareness about that one. But something to keep in mind for next year. And then I would last but not least like to express my gratitude to the the staff in our town, the people that live here, the people that work here. A very happy Thanksgiving, and I and I really appreciate everything that, you know, that we all get to do here together. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Laura. Lisa, any reports tonight?
Um, I certainly echo everything that Laura has said. Um, and I also wanted to thank um, the Senior Center, um, and Kendra for inviting us, the Selectmen Board, to the um, the dinner that was uh, put on for the veterans. I think it's uh, it was wonderful to participate with them. I think it was uh, as as we're losing more and more of the, you know, men who have actually been going um, through the um, preparations for these veterans' holidays, um, that they're still as as important to us as they ever were. And I was very happy, as I'm sure all of us were, to to be invited and to uh, show our support. Um, I have to say that kind of a quiet report this week. I um, wanna wish everybody happy Thanksgiving and look forward to um, warmer weather. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Lisa. Kristen, any reports tonight?
Yes, um, Troop one oh one, Scout Troop one oh one, um, the big wreath sale is happening. Right now, you have a few more days left to order, and they will deliver them to your door on the Saturday after Thanksgiving. Um, they have, they come with a festive bow and uh, the bow is made by Troop eight twenty-three. Is that you, Laura?
That's the B S A Girls Troop.
Yeah, yeah, so, so the troops are working together, and it's a way for them to get their um, uh, like, it's their big fundraiser of the year, basically. Um, and they um, they're balsam wreaths, and they're on a fourteen-inch frame, so you can kind of, they're really nice wreaths. I get them every year. Um, so uh, Troop one oh one asked me to make this announcement for them, because um, my son Peter was in Troop one oh one, and I would just like to say that um, he re- very recently, on last Friday, on my birthday, became Troop one oh one's one hundred and thirty-second Eagle Scout. Yay, Peter.
Can you, congratulations to Peter. I don't mean to interrupt. I didn't catch, if somebody wants to get a wreath, who should they contact?
Oh, right, right, right.
I need a wreath.
I know, okay, so, um, so as far as the wreath sale goes, it's all, it you order them ahead of time. There's a link. So I posted it today on my Facebook page, but you can also get it on Troop one oh one's Facebook page or their website, or you can just email the Select Board and I will send you the link.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Kristen, that concludes your report?
That does conclude my report. Thank you, Laura, for straightening me out. I just got a little starry-eyed there for a minute.
Julianne, any reports tonight?
Yeah, so uh, Master Plan Implementation Met, and they are continuing to refine the the plan for downtown revitalization and hope to come before us um, in the next, in the coming weeks or months, they're sooner rather than later. Um, and as we're winding up the end of the year and looking forward to twenty twenty-four, I I'm I'm hoping that we can discuss as a group uh, s- setting some timeline for some of our big discussion, like goals and Sustainability Committee that wants to come before us, electronic voting and ARPA. And just so that we um, we know when that's going to come up, so so that when people ask us, we can say, we can give them some kind of idea. And lastly, just to wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving. That ends my report.
Thank you. Um, in answer to one of those questions, the electronic voting for town meeting, I think will be on our December eighteenth agenda. Um, a couple of items to add from my reports, uh, Toys for Tots is continuing, uh, began a few days ago. Goes through December fifth. You can drop uh, toys off at the fire station between nine A M. and six P M. Um, and I also want to thank the uh, the fine folks that put on the excellent luncheon at the Senior Center. Um, particularly uh, Jeff Farrell, our Veterans Director, and Kendra Feldette, our Senior Center Director, for organizing really an excellent excellent and powerful event. Um, silly comment this past Friday was Mastodon Day, which I hope will become eventually a real holiday in Northborough. Uh, in eighteen eighty-four, on the seventeenth of November, William Maynard found tusk fragments. Uh, if actually, a lot more than tusk fragments of a mastodon uh, near the Shrewsbury border within Northborough. And some of those tusk fragments are in the historical society. So I um, I will add that when the Algonquin mascot was being renamed, I suggested Mastodon, and nobody listened. Um, and lastly, um, I want to thank the uh, folks that organized the Trinity Coffee House, which is an open mic night that takes place the third Friday of most mo- most months. They invited me to M C. Um, their event this past Friday was a lot of fun. Uh, their next event is the fifteenth of December at seven o'clock P M. at Trinity. Um, I'm a big junkie of of live music, uh, so I like to attend that whenever possible. First Parish has a similar event on the first Friday of every month. There's something in Berlin at nineteen Carter on the second Friday. And um, the American Legion Hall on Wednesdays also frequently has an open mic night. So I encourage all of my live music fans to uh, to attend those whenever possible, and that ends my report. Um, Mike, do you have anything for us tonight?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I probably should have done this while we were still here, but I wanted to thank Lee for the great job he did with his presentation this evening. He took a very complex um, process, and he actually boiled it down to something that people can understand, and I I want to commend him for the job he did, and also to say that it it just continues to amaze me the quality of the staff, people that work for the town. You're you're blessed to have some of these people in the places that they're at. So uh, I want to thank all the folks that work at the town for the job that they do.
Thank you, Mike. Di, anything uh, for us tonight?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I do, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I wanna especially thank the board on behalf of the town staff who are setting the holiday schedule. Uh, it's very much appreciated. But thank you.
Thank you very much, Di.
Welcome.
Yes, um. Any, does anyone have any other business for us before we uh, seek our final public comment and uh, have our concluding executive session for the evening? Seeing nothing, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to offer any comment to us before we wrap up tonight? Raise your electronic hands. I'll be more than happy to recognize you. Going once, going twice. I don't see anyone, so I will entertain an executive session motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A two, to conduct strategy sessions and or contract negotiations for the town administrator, Tim McNerney, due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the board. The board will not return to open session and will adjourn directly from executive session.
Second.
Motion's been made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. We will be concluding over to executive session. Uh, so this concludes our open session for the evening at nine thirty P M. Uh, thank you very much, everyone. We'll take a couple intermittent break to stretch our legs before we uh, we start up that executive. Bye, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Hi, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.